Good evening, everyone. We are here in the Great Hall. It's Monday, December 18th. This is a public hearing scheduled for 2016-286, an ordinance amending Title 17 marijuana establishments. Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll.
Counselor Kane.
Present.
Counselor Crowell.
Present.
Counselor DeBorna.
Present.
Counselor Finn.
Present.
Counselor Harris.
Present.
Counselor LaForest.
Present.
Counselor Liang.
Present.
Counselor Palmuji.
President Hughes.
Here.
Seven members, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Anyone here this evening wishing to speak for? When you do approach the microphone, please say your name and your address. Anybody here to speak in favor of? Anyone here to speak in favor of? Okay? Anyone here to speak against? Anyone here to speak against?
John Rodofale, 62 Grandwall Road. I am against the current proposition. There's many things that are wrong with it. One of it is that you only allow places to open up at 11:00. I don't see any reason why they can't open up the same hours as any other stores that are in the city. I think maybe closing them at a certain time, maybe saying 7:00 is more important than what time they open up earlier in the morning. And, you know, I found out basically today that with that map, it's basically you're approving to only put them...
I'm a little bit confused. It was my understanding that this order was being withdrawn this evening. I don't know where the assistant solicitor... Are we on?
We're on.
The marijuana?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
The assistant solicitor through you, Madam President, will discuss the ordinance in general terms with the council as it sees fit, but we will be resubmitting.
Yeah, so the point I'm making is if you're resubmitting, you're going to require another hearing. So why would we be having a public hearing on something we're not moving on?
That is certainly... That was discussed. The thought was to let it go forward, let people have input. The changes that will be presented in January will not be overly substantive.
Yeah, but again, with all due respect...
There will be another public hearing.
Mr. Walker, there has to be another public meeting.
It will be, yes.
There are people who just left because the assistant solicitor informed them that it wasn't going to be moving forward this evening. I'm sure if they knew that there was going to be a hearing, they would have stayed. So I would strongly encourage... I think this should end. It should not proceed.
That's certainly at the body's discretion. That's...
I have a problem. So should we bring that to a vote? Does that have to be a roll call? Did you want to make a... Do we have to do a motion? A public hearing?
Again, Madam Clerk, you should know, right? You're at the end of your... We're at the end of this session. Nothing moves forward after this evening. Everything needs to be refiled.
To be fair to the...
And those things that need to be refiled will require new hearings.
To be fair to the clerk, she did raise that question with us this morning. And for scheduling purposes, the opinion that we had administratively was, well, there's nothing wrong with having two public hearings. You can get a lot of the meat on the bone, so to speak, talk...
Well, that's the point. Again, just to make the point, you have people who have very strong feelings about this who've left.
And they will have another...
Could I just...
Madam President, may I speak?
One moment, Mr. Assistant Solicitor. Are you here to speak on the marijuana?
I'm here to answer a statement that was made by Counselor Finn.
Okay. If you could speak into the microphone.
Counselor Finn did introduce me to a couple of women who were in the audience, and I spoke to them briefly. But I want to make clear that I did not tell anyone there wasn't going to be a public hearing. I said that I didn't think there was going to be a vote tonight. It's not my call to say whether there's a public hearing. I'm not a member of the city council.
Well, again, with all due respect, you did tell them that you were withdrawing it this evening, correct?
I didn't say withdrawing. I said it was not going to be a vote.
It's not going to be a vote. So it dies, it's going to be filed, correct?
I explained that, Counselor Finn.
So that means that you have to resubmit it, does it not?
Exactly.
So if it's being resubmitted, it also is going to require an additional public hearing, correct?
Yes, it will.
So my point is, what's the purpose of this hearing?
Well, I would suggest through you, Madam President, to the counselor, that it's not a waste of time to have a public hearing to get public input on matters of public concern and policy.
Well, it is when you have not, again, when you've sent a major amendment that's been ruled to be a substantive change, and that that, again, is going to have to, again, be put out for notice so that people are aware of that, because the purpose of the public hearing is to be heard on the specific legislation that's being submitted. And again, I just really am totally confused that this would go forward.
Thank you, Counselor Finn.
I just wanted to set the record straight.
I understand. Thank you very much, Assistant Solicitor.
Assistant Solicitor, again, it was not meant to impugn your character or judgment.
So Counselor Finn, we're just going to adjourn the public hearing at this time, and we'll just call this portion closed. Thank you.
Rule 23.
Thank you. All right, well, we'll be coming back at 7:00 P.M. Good evening. This is the 7:00 P.M. public hearing on 2017-189, ordinance amending Title 17, zoning section 8.4, Planned Unit Developments District, the hospital site. At this time, I'd call forth those who would like to speak in support. Anyone here to speak in support?
Good evening, members of the ordinance committee. My name is Will Smith. I live at 15 Glendale Road in Quincy. I'm here tonight representing the Hospital Hill Neighborhoods Association, HHNA. Our neighborhood association comprises approximately 100 families in the Hospital Hill area, many of whom are direct butters of the hospital property. We have several people, several of our members in the audience today. We are speaking in one voice. I'd like to start by reflecting on some of the history of our neighborhood association and its relationship to Quincy Medical Center and our neighborhood park, Glendale Park. For many years, this park was used by our neighborhood kids on Glendale, Monroe, Euclid, Colonial, and Heritage Roads. Then in 1999, the hospital was sold by the city, and the property, along with the park, was no longer held publicly. For the next five years, nothing changed. The neighborhood enjoyed the benefits of the park. The city actually continued to mow the grass, cleaned up the trash, and the neighborhood continued to clean the park as part of the Cleaner, Greener Quincy Program. Then in 2004, the current CEO of Quincy Medical proposed a three-story parking garage on a major piece of the wooded lot in the park. Needless to say, the proposal didn't sit well with the neighbors, and a prolonged period of disagreement ensued. This included the locking out of the kids and the adults from using the park, and was, in fact, enforced by uniformed Quincy Medical Center security personnel. I make these comments to provide a little insight on why we sometimes, you know, maybe act strongly and have some very strong opinions when proposals are made that impact the park and the wooded area. Some of us are still having a hard time giving up ownership of the park. We'd like to say we're very passionate about the park. We're here tonight to talk about the PUD amendment before you. Needless to say, the last few weeks have been a whirlwind of activity concerning this document. I could spend more time detailing out all the hours we've spent reviewing, discussing, arguing, and stressing out over this one little page document. However, it could not even come close to the amount of actual hours other people have spent on it. Enough is enough. It's time to move on. HHNA had requested two major revisions to be made to this PUD amendment. The first was to remove the sole exception clause. The second was to increase more protection to Glendale Park from development. We are extremely pleased that both of these have now been incorporated into this document. We'd like to thank city solicitor Timmons and Fox Rock for making this happen. HHNA is in full support of this revised PUD document. We are looking forward to working with all parties, the mayor's office, the planning board, Fox Rock, our Ward 5 counselor Kirsten Hughes, and the full city council in making this property the jewel that it can be at the top of Hospital Hill. We are especially looking forward to working with our neighbor, Fox Rock, to make Glendale Park a gem of a park that the entire city can be very, very proud of. Thank you again for listening to our neighborhood concerns.
Thank you very much, Will. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Hi, well, thank you. I live, Kristen Pletz, 31 Farrell Street.
I'm sorry, say your name.
Kristen Pletz, 31 Farrell Street, which is off of Whitwell. I am also a member of the HHNA, but I'm speaking in my capacity as a resident of 31 Farrell Street, and my background is a zoning attorney. I'm not representing... I'm in active status right now, but this is something that I noticed when I was reading the proposed language, that it uses terms assisted living, long-term care, senior independent living, but for the existing PUD section, which is 8.4.7, it talks about age-restricted housing. And further down on 8.4.8, it has congregate elderly facilities. Within the entire zoning ordinance for Quincy Section 10, the only defined terms are age-restricted senior housing facility, assisted living residence, and congregated elderly facilities. So I just think in the spirit of clarity, if we're going to have those terms put in for the proposed, they need to tie into the other sections, either supersede or be in line with, mimic, or have defined terms, because I think when you start using terms that are different from the other PUD section talking about age-restricted housing, practice tells me in the past that that's where things go south down the road when you are not using clarified terms otherwise in the ordinance. So I would just ask that maybe that get a second look going forward. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? John.
John Rodofale, 62 Grandwall Road. I'm in favor of a good development going up at Hospital Hill, but I want to make sure that the neighbors are protected. And the way neighbors are protected is through good zoning ordinances. So this is about zoning right now. We're missing a couple lines from the zoning code. I think at minimum, if we add in minimum 300 square feet per dwelling unit and minimum 100 square feet per dwelling unit of open space. And what I would like to see is a separate amendment saying that 10% of the open space, which is not a lot at all, is the top part, because when you look at an aerial of that right now, the entire top space right now is tar. I would like to see some trees up on top. I would like to see a lot of shrubbery. I would like to drive up Whitwell and see a very nice landscaped area, something that's developed good. But we need minimum. You know, there really should be setbacks, too, that shows how far it can be. Fox Rock recently acquired a parcel right to the left. The parcel right behind that goes to Colonial Drive. So they could, in essence, buy a parcel there, and there'd be an access point going out from Colonial Drive possibly. There's another access point that could go out someplace else, too. There's nothing in there saying they can't have future access points. I think that's something that is going to be very destructive to the neighborhood if you do allow cars to go out any other way other than Whitwell. So if that could be added in, too, that would be more protection for the neighbors. But I support... And this is going to be a dense development up there. I support a dense development, but I just don't want to see 100 square feet per dwelling unit, and I don't want to see no green space up on top of that hill. So if we put that in the zoning, that way you'll be able to, you know, have some say right now, because by voting for this, there won't be any say in the future. So you got to say right now to say what the zoning is going to be, and after that, that's how it's going to be. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Chuck Clemm. I'm here on behalf of Fox Rock Properties, the owner and developer of the former Quincy Medical Center property at 114 Whitwell Street, and I'm here speaking in support of the city council PUD amendment. Since purchasing the property in December of 2016, Fox Rock has had a constructive year of discussions with city officials and our neighbors about the future redevelopment of this parcel. I'd like to thank Ward Counselor Kirsten Hughes, in whose ward this property sits, as well as Counselor Kane, whose ward starts across Whitwell Street, for their input and guidance, as well as other councilors we've had the chance to speak with this year. I'd also like to thank Will Smith from the Hospital Hill Neighborhood Association, who spoke earlier, for his thoughts and guidance, and the input from him and the whole HHNA throughout this year. The input from our neighbors has been a top priority of our planning process and will continue to be so. Some have asked us why developers, here speaking in favor of dimensional reductions. Candidly, we have seen these PUDs a thousand times, not how we want to do business. Hopefully, this amendment puts us on a constructive path in 2018 towards a project that the neighborhood, Fox Rock, and the city can be excited about. This approach provides clarity on all sides, and we certainly see the wisdom of it. Tonight is the continuation of a conversation that we expect to continue to be productive for all the reasons that Counselor Hughes and the mayor's office have set. We believe this makes sense from a planning and procedural standpoint, and if approved, we anticipate hitting the ground running with the planning process in January. One question that has been raised about this amendment is open space. What we have committed to publicly, and we are happy to document in any form and fashion, is Fox Rock is starting from a position that we are going to make Glendale Park publicly accessible, expand and improve upon it, and maintain it. Not a small proposition, given the lifespan of this project and our commitment to be lifelong developers in Quincy, but one that Fox Rock is happy to undertake. So with the input from the HHNA, we are here in agreement to increase the minimum open space, and we'll be forming a task force in January to help lead the design, maintenance, and operations plans for the resulting improved and enhanced Glendale Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else? All right. Anyone wishing to speak against? Anyone here wishing to speak against?
Phil Zampso, 10 Edgewood, Quincy. I didn't realize that public comment on this matter was going to be allowed tonight. As such, I'll be brief. A key rationale proposed in support of this proposal is a hoot. Counselor Hughes, a proponent of this matter, has publicly stated that as the city council screwed up repeatedly on various C-Mart SPGA hearings, it should thus not take this matter up as regards reviewing an SPGA PUD approval of the former Quincy Medical Center, such as to use a technical legal phrase, "hooey." I just happen to have a copy of Judge Long's ruling, and it cites easily 85% of its sites, if not even more, in great detail, "all manner of dubious actions by those under control of the administration that the judge variously found to be unacceptable." And yet, Counselor Hughes is now proposing to turn the possible permitting of the site to bodies and people at least largely controlled by the administration. I can understand wanting to get this done collaboratively, but it's hard to see this proposal as anything other than a ruse to fast-track approval and to do so largely behind closed doors. Special permit granting authority is in place so as to assure a final check by this body that things are kosher, as well as done in a public fashion. And it doesn't take much. You can do an SPA hearing in two weeks. Advertise, have it, hold it, comments, boom, boom, done. It's not a big impediment, and you have a duty to do so. This proposal, however, allows you to avoid doing your duty. Next, I would suggest there is something far more important that this body needs that needs to see the light of the day as well as be explained. You all approve the spending of public funds to pursue a reverter claim upon the former hospital property. To date, however, no public report on same has been made. Conversely, the mayor has since been cited in the ledger saying that the city may see up to $4.5 million in payments from Fox Rock's care of the reverter. At the same time, the mayor was also cited as saying that payment by Fox Rock's can be reduced to as little as zero if Fox Rock's meet some combination of various private investments or tendency bogies. My questions are as follows. How can the mayor unilaterally facilitate the transfer of a city asset, the reverter, as well as then also pose unilaterally a scheme whereby the acquirer of the former property can avoid making any payment to the city on the municipal property asset that arises from the reverter? One can only assume that the administration has an explanation. In turn, it is only reasonable that it be provided and found acceptable by this body before it entertains any discussion as regards the property's redevelopment. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Bill.
How you doing? My name's David Franklaw. I live at 18 Euclid Ave. I'm not really kind of up here as against, and I'm kind of in the middle here. The big thing that I'm concerned about is what the city of Quincy is going to do with infrastructure in that neighborhood. I live on Euclid Ave. Back when we had the hospital, it was a cut-through point for everybody. Even now, it's a shortcut, and I think by additional traffic, the city of Quincy has to do something about this. Whitwell Street, you're putting your life in your hands. I don't know if any of you guys have actually walked down Whitwell Street. I have. It's scary. These guys are coming down there 50 miles an hour, 60 miles an hour. My son's friend lives on Whitwell Street, and he's 14, and I still tell him, "Check, you can't see a car coming up or down the hill." So I think whatever the city decides as far as what we're going to build up there, I think the infrastructure up there has to be looked at, you know? And this is as a parent whose kid got hit by a car on Glendale Road from people cutting through the neighborhood. It's a serious concern. And, you know, it's great to build all these buildings, and God knows I do construction. I love it. But at the same time, you know, the quality of life of the people that live in the neighborhood should be taken into consideration, and I would like to see something happen. As far as Whitwell, it's a raceway, and it's scary, and I highly recommend everybody take a walk down that street, you know? Don't even have to be on peak time. See what these people are doing, driving way too fast. And, you know, you add 300, 400 more cars coming in and out of there. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak against? All right. Anyone wishing to sign for or against may do so. There are papers back through the doors and to the right. This time, we will call the public hearing closed. Thank you. We will resume at 7:20? Yes. Public places, 12.24, City Harbor Section 12.24.03 enforcement. That public hearing has been canceled. It will be rescheduled at a later date after this term. So if anybody is here for that, we will not be having a public hearing on that this evening. And we will resume at 7:25. This is the 7:25 public hearing on ordinance 2017-039, a smoke-free Adams Green. Anyone here to speak in favor? Anyone here to speak in favor? All right. Anyone here to speak against? Anyone here to speak against? Anybody want to light up on Adams Green? Okay. Anyone here to sign for or against may do so by going out the back and signing the sheets through the doors. At this time, I will call the public hearing closed. Thank you. We will resume the regular council meeting in two minutes. We'll start it off. Start it off. Good evening. Tonight is Monday, December 18th. It is 7:30. We are in the Great Hall. Madam Clerk, if you will call the roll, members, please.
Counselor Kane.
Yes, present.
Counselor Crowell.
Present.
Counselor DeBorna.
Present.
Counselor Finn.
Present.
Counselor Harris.
Present.
Counselor LaForest.
Present.
Counselor Liang.
Present.
Counselor Palmuji.
President Hughes.
Present.
Eight members, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. If you'll all stand and join me in a moment of silence. For our service, men and women serving here and abroad, particularly at this time during the holidays, to be away from family and friends and in dangerous places is very difficult. So we remember those who do so in defense of us. And if you'll turn and face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam Clerk, if you'll read the open meeting law.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged impermissible.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Before we head to our agenda items, I would like to ask Senator Keenan and State Representative Bruce Ayers to come to the podium. It's always a pleasure to see our state delegation here before the council, former member.
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk. It's a pleasure to be here and to join my colleagues in government tonight, and I know that you've got a very busy agenda, so we'll be very brief. But we wanted to take this opportunity to acknowledge two members of the city council who are... Tonight will be their last meeting, and I had the privilege and honor of serving with both, and I can tell you that they will be greatly, greatly missed from our perspective in the state legislature, because they brought so much to what you do, and that translated and transferred up to us in the legislature. So we have citations here tonight, and one is for Ward 1 Counselor Margaret LaForest, the other is for Counsel large Joe Finn. Margaret was always a pleasure to serve with, and I think she has set a standard that all the councilors now follow as far as what she does in community outreach. She does a remarkable job, did a remarkable job, of keeping all the residents of Ward 1 in tune to what was going on, and I say that as a resident of Ward 1. I never felt, as a resident, like I didn't know what was going on, and that's in large part to what Margaret did. She was a strong voice for her constituents. She was very active, visible. She really didn't miss anything, and I know that Ms. McCarthy will do a fine job as he comes in as a Ward 1 council, but he certainly has big shoes to fill. And so, and beyond what she did for her constituents in Ward 1, I had the great pleasure of working with her on so many other things, whether it was tourism or ferry service, or whatever it may be. She was also, at the state level, very visible, very vocal, and a very strong advocate, not only for those of Ward 1, but for all the residents of the city of Quincy. So Margaret, thank you for your service. Counselor Finn, we go back quite a few years, and I served with Joe for all the years that I was on the city council, and he was a person when things sometimes got a little crazy, when you didn't know where you were going, whether you wondered whether you had crossed all the Ts and dotted all the Is, whether you did what you had to do to get an ordinance or whatever it was in the right place to be acted upon in the right way by the city council. Joe made sure every single time... Joe made sure every single time that there was a process, and the process was followed. And he wasn't ever afraid to speak out and say, "Let's put the brakes on here. Let's take a step back. We haven't done it as we're supposed to do it." And that was invaluable. He was a person who really understood what it took to move a piece of legislation here. And he, too, was just a strong advocate for the people that he represented. He brought a voice of reason, rational being to the city council, and he'll be missed because of that. And like with Counselor LaForest, I've also had the opportunity to work with Counselor Finn at the state level, and all the attributes that made him such a successful city council magnify that by 10 as to what he did in his day job, I guess, his real job, although being a council, I think he ended up having two real jobs. But same thing at the state level, so widely respected for the work that he does, and somebody that, when you need information and you need to know what's really going on, you go to Joe Finn. And Joe, I want to thank you for your service, thank you for your friendship, as well as yours, Margaret, and wish you both the very, very best. The city is the better for your service. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Counselor Ayers, I mean, Counselor Ayers, former Counselor Ayers, State Representative Ayers.
That's right. No double digits. Thank you, Counselor Ludge. I just want to echo some of John's comments, you know, and being a former Ward counselor, Margaret, I can appreciate your experience and your background and all the hard work and effort you've given to your constituents over the years. Coastal issues, constituent issues, the enormous amount of meetings you have to go to, your work on the FEMA flood maps, and working together, of course, with tourism. Every time we worked together with my colleagues in the House, you're very professional, very responsive, and it was great to work with you. And Joe, my friend, my neighbor, as John alluded, you bring an awful lot of experience, background, and stability to the council. Your advocacy for your vision for the city of Quincy while helping those in need is second to none. So I want to thank you again on behalf of the House delegation for all your hard work and efforts. And as John alluded to, I think one of the nice things about being a public official is the relationships you establish over the years, and you are both great counselors and great friends. Thank you for your service.
Madam President, I'd just like to present the citations to each Ward 1 Counselor Margaret E. LaForest, in recognition of your outstanding commitment and dedicated service to the great city of Quincy, your seven years, and then also to Counselor Ludge, Joe Finn, for your outstanding commitment and dedicated service to the great city of Quincy. And we bring these citations on behalf, not only of Representative Ayers and myself, I keep saying council, old habits die young, but Representative Ayers, myself, but also Representative Taki Chan, who couldn't make this evening, same for Representative Taki Chan, Representative Ron Mariano, Representative Dan Hunt. So on behalf of the legislative delegation, we say thank you and wish you the very best.
All right, next. If we, if there's no objection from anyone, we will take Agenda Item Number 5 out of order, since we do have a busy agenda this evening. Madam Clerk?
Yes. 2017-202, a gift for $150,000 from Dan J. Quark for Fax and Field Track Storage Facility.
Great. And I believe the mayor's representative here is here to speak on this gift. Mr. Walker.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you, with your indulgence, I'd like to speak briefly on this matter on behalf of Mayor Koch. The donor of this gift, Mr. Daniel Quark, I believe was trying to get here tonight. I do not believe he was able to make it, so in his place, I'll describe briefly what is taking place with this gift. All of you know Mr. Quark and his years of tremendous civic generosity in the city of Quincy. He is very much the perfect example of what it means to be a good corporate citizen. He has given literally hundreds and thousands of dollars over the course of many, many years to a variety of local causes, most notably, he's a charter member of the city's School of Business Partnership, and most notably and most visibly, he is the reason why every year on Flag Day, our Flag Day, our wonderful Flag Day celebration has the best fireworks display anywhere in the region. Dan Quark donates every single year to make that a possibility. The gift before you tonight of $150,000 that Mr. Quark is making to the city is meant as a compliment to an existing appropriation for a new facility at the Fax and Field Track. You may notice down there, there's sort of a blue box. That box is going to be used for storage. That's going to be replaced with an aesthetically pleasing, functional facility that, thanks to Mr. Quark's generosity, will be able to include restroom facility, coach's room, as well as some storage space. And because of his gift, as opposed to being simply a utilitarian facility structure, this one is going to be able to fit in much better with a lot of the work that has been done, as all of you know, in that corridor going up and down Cottington Street. So with that and with your indulgence, again, I would respectfully ask that the council accept this gift from Mr. Daniel Quark. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Walker. Is there a motion? Counselor LaForest.
Madam President, I make a motion to approve, and I just want to, on the motion briefly?
Yes.
Thank Mr. Quark for his strong corporate citizenship. I mean, he has been a tremendous community partner in what he's done in renovation, in investment into his properties along the Southern Otterie, and now we are beginning the renovation of his project along McGrath Highway that you and I have worked on. It borders Ward 1, 5, and Counselor Kroll on Ward 2. So I'm grateful for his continued support, and the track has become one of the best successes in the city, so we're grateful for this final piece. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor LaForest. So motion by Counselor LaForest, seconded by Counselor Liang. On the motion, anyone wishing to be heard? Very well. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Counselor Keen.
Yes.
Counselor Kroll.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor LaForest.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Pelmucci. President Hughes.
Yes.
Eight members. Passes.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Okay, so next, we will go with, back to our regularly scheduled agenda, with item 1. Madam Clerk?
2016-286, ordinance amending zoning ordinance, adding section 610 marijuana establishments. And I believe Assistant City Clerk, I mean Solicitor.
Oh.
No one's going to speak on that.
I believe this is the one that we pulled the public hearing for this evening, so Mr. Walker, would you like to address some of the issues we spoke of earlier?
Sure, Madam President, at your request. Through you, simply put, there are a number of changes that need to be put into this ordinance, and we will be resubmitting it in January.
Okay. Thank you. So, yes, Counselor Finn.
I'm sorry, excuse me, I got confused. Are we talking about the 2017-039?
Yes.
No.
No, 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 sorry. 286.
Number 1.
Oh, okay, number 1. Got it. Great. Thank you.
Okay. All set?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we will, to be continued in January. It's not really continued. It will be reintroduced in January. Okay. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Number 2 on the agenda, 2017-039, ordinance amending Title 8, Health and Safety, Smoking on the Adams Green. City-only and in and around the city hall and on the Adams Green prohibited.
Counselor Harris.
Make a motion to approve in the absence of Counselor Pelmucci.
Okay, motion to approve by Counselor Harris. Is there a second? Seconded by Counselor LaForest. On the motion, anyone wishing to speak? Yes, Counselor Keen.
Thanks, Madam President. I don't know who I direct this to, maybe the clerk or our clerk or committees. Do we, do we have an ordinance on the books that constitutes smoking guidelines on the rest of public properties?
It does. We do.
Like rest of parks and...
It is. And it's also in the parks rules as well.
Okay.
So it covers it, but they wanted to go a little further.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, we can move forward. Madam Clerk, if you'd call the roll.
Counselor Keen.
Yes.
Counselor Kroll.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor LaForest.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Hughes.
Yes.
Eight members. Passes.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, let me just, we're going to take a brief recess for a few minutes, and we will come right back. All right. We will now resume the council meeting. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Number 3 on the agenda, 2017-189, ordinance amending Title 17, zoning, section 8.4, Planned Unit Development District Hospital Site. Counselor Hughes.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Counselor LaForest.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like, first, I'll start to make a motion to approve...
Actually, one moment, Counselor LaForest. Sorry. Counselor Keen, did you have a point of clarification?
No, I'm wondering, I know there were some things discussed that I was about to introduce, changes to this, to propose an amendment on this particular ordinance.
Okay. All right. If you wish to make an amendment now, or should we introduce it? Do you care if we just introduce...
I mean, I, yeah, with all due respect, I didn't know what, Counselor LaForest...
I think...
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't know if you had been involved in this.
She was just going to introduce the ordinance, second it, and then you can do the amendments if that's what you prefer.
Go for it.
You got it. I think, to a budding, budding word councilor.
I think they're the same, so, yeah.
Chair a closer border, and I just know as Madam President, yourself chairing the meeting, had been working together. I know that both of you, in particular, spend a lot of time working with the neighbors, so I guess I will be glad to, one, make the motion to approve, and pass the floor to Counselor Keen for the amendments.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Counselor LaForest. So motion by Counselor LaForest. Is there a second from Counselor Keen prior to your amendments? We can vote on it as amended.
Right.
Okay. All right, then, second.
Okay, so seconded by Counselor Keen. On the motion, Counselor Keen.
So this was something that, obviously, Kirsten, Madam President, you put forward most recently about the proposed Fox Rock development to replace the existing Quincy City Hospital. There's been a lot of back and forth since the time that this was introduced, working with the Hospital Hill Neighborhood Association in Fox Rock, as well as with the mayor's office, to change a couple of things that currently exist in this ordinance so that the neighbors are satisfied with whatever's going forward. So I'd like to propose amendments to section 8.4.13 to eliminate the last two sentences, starting from the sole exception shall be when and ending at shall be applicable, and in section 8.4.14, changing the open space requirement to 10% of the aggregate land area. Twenty, I'm sorry, 20%, 20% from 10%.
Okay. So a motion to amend by Counselor... Motion to amend by Counselor Keen, is there a second? Seconded by Counselor LaForest.
On the motion.
On the motion to amend, Counselor Keen.
So there's been a lot of discussion around this particular, and I guess certain rights that the Special Permit Granting Authority, if this project were to come back before us, we would have to, I guess, we're part, we're members of the Special Permit Granting Authority, in which we adjudicate the project as opposed to weigh in as we would Ward counselors in the planning board process and the typical requirements that are put forward. So I just want to highlight that, you know, this is very much a neighborhood project, and if it were to go forward as currently outlined in the Planned Urban Development District ordinance, Counselor Hughes, myself, any other Ward council would not be able to opine on the particularities of this project as this project would be deliberated under the Planned Urban Development District ordinance. So even the work that we did over the past two days, speaking with constituents in the Hospital Hill area to change these two particular amendments, we wouldn't be able to do things like that. We wouldn't be able to opine. We wouldn't be able to have really any input on how this project would form. As we've kind of gone through, well, I haven't gone through any planned urban development districts, but I know that a couple of other of my council colleagues can speak to those. But I just want to be clear that, you know, even these two particular amendments to this ordinance, you know, they were important to get done because we wanted to make the neighborhood satisfied with whatever project's going to go forward with this, and so it's important that we have the ability to weigh in on the project going forward, and we will be able to do that with the traditional planning board process. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Keen. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Anyone else? Yes, Counselor DeBona.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I just want to maybe, if it's through you, to the mayor representative or to the city solicitor, what is the situation on the emergency room hospital that's going to be open for the next four years? What, what's going to happen to that location, and can it be moved, or how's the procedure work with, with what we have here in front of us tonight?
Through you, Madam President, all existing agreements are still valid. It is Fox Rock's hope and the city's hope that future developments will allow for ED to be seamless in operation, whether it be at the Whitwell Street site or in the downtown vicinity, in some way, shape, or form. It's everyone's goal at the table to have the ED fully functional at all times. As you know, there's no proposal right now for Whitwell Street. This is simply setting the table, but maintaining the ED and medical space is a priority of both the Fox Rock team and the city team.
Does the right of revolvent still exist with this property for the emergency room, or does that change at all with this new PUD on, in front of us?
No. It's not. This zoning has no relationship with the reverter.
Okay. That's, that's the clarification that I needed on, on that constituents were asking about what was going to happen with the emergency room and if it's going to be relocated or what we're going to do with it. So it will be staying open for the next four years because it's a five-year term.
Absolutely.
And we're year in, and we've got four more years to go. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much. Counselor LaForest.
Thank you, thank you, Madam President. So I'm going to support Counselor Keen's amendment, those with the similar amendments I was going to make on your, on your behalf.
Thank you.
So just to clarify on that. Second, I gave a lot of consideration about whether the council should be acting as the Special Permit Granting Authority or whether it should go to the planning board, and we've talked, you know, Counselor Pelmucci and I, in the past, about whether the council gets out of the PUD business, and I think in general, that isn't something I support. But in this case, where this project is in the middle of the residential neighborhood, I think it would be very difficult to be the two abutting on three, really, because the Ward 1 on the lower end of the Hospital Hill by the Quincy Saturday, you've got three Ward counselors who are going to have constituents that need their advocacy, need their voices heard, so when the counselor, the Ward counselor is then the jury member, it puts you in a very difficult position, and I think this is a unique parcel for this city. There's obviously a lot of emotion because it is the hospital property. I'm impressed by the Hospital Hill Neighbor Association, their consistency, their advocacy, their, their care for the neighborhood, and so I will be supporting the amendment and the subsequent motion this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor LaForest. Anyone else wishing to be heard?
This is out there.
Correct. Yes, and wishing to be heard. You, yes, you will. Anyone else wishing to be heard on the amendment? Yes, Counselor Pelmucci.
I just wanted to clarify, Counselor DeBona's questions to the mayor's representative. ED, you're referring to Emergency Department, right? Okay. And when you said it has nothing... And when you said it has nothing to... When you said it has nothing to do with the reverter, you're referring to the Emergency Department, not the future development of that site? Because that 100% has to do with the reverter, right?
The PUD in and of itself does not change the dynamic of what exists today with the reverter. There is, as you know, an agreement in place that's relative to what ultimately is proposed at that location and ultimately proposed in the downtown location that, yes, would have an impact on the reverter. The presence of it within the PUD does not... This rezoning does not affect that aspect of the issue. Everything else that's going on does, yes, but this does not.
Right, okay. And then, the second piece of that is, they can still buy out of having an emergency room in the city of Quincy if they choose so. They pay a fine and they walk away, correct?
I believe so, but I would ask the solicitor if there's clarification on that.
Are you asking him, or are you asking me to ask him?
Asking you to ask him.
And people wonder why government can't get anything done. Mr. Timmons, if you wouldn't mind. They really like you, Jim.
Questions about the Emergency Department?
Yes, it was that the, I believe it was a deal struck with the Attorney General. It had nothing to do with the city, but under the terms of the agreement or whatever it was, the outcome with the Attorney General's involvement was that they had to hold, they had to keep the emergency room open unless they could show that they were losing money or they could pay some, I remember, I forget what the number is, but in my view, it was a paltry sum, you know, just like $200,000 a year for each year that they closed down early. Is that the lay of the land in terms of the emergency room?
Perhaps, but part of what happened during the negotiation, when Stewart sold the property, was we addressed emergency facilities up there and the transfer, or potential transfer, if a downtown facility was built. But there's going to be emergency services maintained in the city. I don't recall the particulars right now of what that is, and I can report to you after the fact. But the key here is what Mr. Walker said is accurate, that all we're doing now is affecting the zoning of the property. It has nothing to do with the current agreement, which we called it a reverter agreement when we executed with Fox Rock. But the issue of Emergency Department services is addressed in that agreement, and it's distinct from the agreement Stewart entered into with the Attorney General.
Okay.
Because they are gone now. They're operating the emergency facility, but they're not the owner.
Right. And so, I guess that was at the heart of my question is, could the emergency room shut down because there is no teeth to the agreement that the AG reached with them? But you're saying essentially, no, because we've reached a separate agreement with the owners of the...
The new owner, who has relationships with other healthcare providers, that, you know, that was the discussion, that there might be interest by another healthcare provider to come in. And I'm talking about, you know, a skilled, established entity.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Madam President.
Anyone else wishing to be heard on the amendment? Okay. Madam Clerk, if you'll vote on the amendment. So, this is on the amendment introduced by Counsel Kane.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Crowell.
Yes.
Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Finn.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel LaForest.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Nine members. The amendment passes.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Now, we'll move to the motion to pass as amended, and Counsel Finn wishing to speak.
Thank you, Madam President. And first and foremost, particularly to the Hospital Hill Association, I definitely understand your concern and your issues in terms of wanting to make certain that there's some level of control, that this does not have an adverse impact on your neighborhood and your community. But I have to raise some issues or concerns that I have in terms of setting a precedent of taking and moving away from a planned unit development approach. As I read what's before us tonight, what this has simply done has shifted it to site plan review. What that basically does, in my mind, is it fast-tracks it for any developer. The process that you go through within a planned unit development is far more rigorous and, in my opinion, greater power essentially to expand and to help and to shape the type of project that you want to have. And so, I just really wanted to explain my vote. I think one of the concerns that I have is I really get concerned when this body wishes to cede more and more power outside of itself to the mayor and to these other organizations. So, with that, I mean, I know where the votes are going, but I felt important to explain where I am with that. If there's ever been a difficulty with planned unit development, is there have been certain counselors, very few, at certain times, who do not understand the adjudicatory role that they play, who did not understand that you can't come out and say, "I'm opposed to a project" before any type of public hearing has occurred. And if there's been any problems, that's where it's been at. But under planned unit development, there's the opportunity for peer review. There's an opportunity for far more resources, in my mind, to help people who are supposed to be representing you, shape the specific project that you want. So, with that, I will be voting no. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Finn. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Counsel Palmucci.
Thank you. I just, we're essentially having a public conversation, the same as we had on the phone earlier today, Counsel Finn and I. But I always appreciate his wisdom and guidance on the council I have for my entire service here. But as a ward counselor, I feel as though I sit in a very different place than an at-large counselor when a project, and especially in Ward Four, because there has been several during my tenure here. Fundamentally, the system is flawed in that we have to divorce ourselves from the role in which we originally sought as a ward counselor, to be an advocate for the folks that we represent. That's what our job boils down to at the very basic level, is that we are an advocate. We are the voice of the residents that elect us in City Hall, in all forms of it. And then, the job has changed over the years. It's more, it becomes more and more constituent services and more and more one-on-one advocacy on behalf of residents and their needs. But when it comes to a planned unit development project, you're then forced by the law, I mean, and by what's right, and due process, that an applicant shouldn't be coming up before a body where the bodies already made up their mind. That's not affording an applicant and someone who deserves due process their due process and to be measured on the merits of their proposal rather than on the wishes, desires, and feelings of the residents who would be impacted by it. And that creates really an untenable position for a ward counselor, because you can't be an advocate and be a neutral arbiter at the same time. You just can't. And we can try, and there's been instances in the past where members of this body just refuse to try, and they fully embrace their advocacy role, and it's gotten us into some trouble. But even when we do it right, it doesn't feel right. I can tell you, I've sat up here and been neutral when I know residents that I represent that send me up here to be their advocate don't want it. And that's a position I just, I mean, I talked to the council president when I saw this on the agenda to be proposed, and I said, "You should have gone for the whole thing and taken us out of the PUD process across the city." Because I just don't think we are capable of serving the residents' interests. As a ward counselor at the very least, perhaps that isn't at-large as well, but I can only speak from my experience. We can't serve the interests of the residents where we mentally divorce ourselves from the advocacy in which we spend every single day as a city councilor. It's just something that you can't suspend temporarily. And then, especially go back and tell those people why. I mean, trying to explain why you can't say what everybody wants you to say about a project, it defies logic, and the mental gymnastics involved is untenable, as I said. So, I'm going to support this. I'd also support, as I said to President Hughes, I'd also would have supported it if it took all PUDs away from us, the council. And I agree with what Counsel Finn says. Anytime this body cedes control to the executive, it's a loss for the body. And he makes a good point, because you really can, you really can do some good up here during the PUD process. But I think in order to be able to maintain your role as an advocate on behalf of residents 100% in these jobs, you have to take the PUD away from the counselors. So, I appreciate that. And there's no one who's been a bigger advocate, second to Counsel Finn perhaps, of this body asserting its authority and asserting its place in the checks and balances of government. But on this particular one, I just, it doesn't sit well with me that a ward counselor would be expected to hold their tongue in advocacy of the residents and in support of the residents who we represent. So, I'll be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counsel Palmucci. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay. So, we have a motion to approve as amended by...
Seconded.
And seconded, okay. I would just like to say, I want to thank the Neighborhood Association, who is here. They have worked hard. They care about that neighborhood. I appreciate you being here this evening and advocating, working with the administration, working with the folks from Fox Rock, and communicating those questions and answers. And I would only say that I have long been a supporter of taking the PUD out of the council's hands, because I do believe it's very difficult. I mean, all of the reasons that Counsel Palmucci discussed, for those folks who are hired to be advocates for the neighborhood, very hard to explain to people, your constituents, your folks who talk to you every day, who rely on you to get things done for them, why you can't do that, why you have to vote on a project based on its merits, which is often an unpopular project. So, be that as it may, this is before us this evening, just as this particular site. Perhaps Counsel Palmucci and I had introduced an ordinance change to take PUDs out of the council entirely a few years back with a different council. Perhaps we'll see how it goes and put it forth again in the next term. But I will be supporting this amendment. Again, I want to thank everyone who's had a hand in it. And with that, Madam Clerk, I would ask you to call the roll.
Thank you, Madam President. I did receive a communication today in my office on behalf of the planning board. They submitted a positive recommendation, five to zero, in favor of Council Order 2017-189, and it is in all of your packets.
Great. Thank you very much.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Crowell.
Yes.
Counsel DeBona.
No.
Counsel Finn.
No.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel LaForest.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Seven members, you pass this.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
That concludes...
All right. That concludes our listed agenda. Right now, we will move to approval of previous meeting minutes. Before you are the minutes of December 4, 2017. At this time, I'd accept a motion to approve the minutes by Counsel Harris, seconded by Counsel LaForest. All those in favor? Aye. All those against? Great. All right. Communications and reports to the mayor, other city officers, and city boards. There are none. Unfinished business and the preceding meeting. Madam Clerk.
Yes, we do have some unfinished business. 2017-197, order authorized in the MBTA to lease air rights over the Quincy Center Transportation Facility.
Great. Counsel LaForest.
Thank you, Madam President. There's been talk for decades about Quincy realizing its potential, and we are at a critical point in making that happen. We share a vision for a revitalized downtown. This body, through the years, has developed the design guidelines to ensure the parcels develop to the look and the feel of the modern downtown we envision. This body has taken multiple votes to amend the URDP and incorporate the MBTA parcel into our MEPA permit in defining the process for its development. We have always recognized that the MBTA Quincy Center Station and public access to transit is essential for the success of downtown. We have been frustrated by the existing conditions of the station, the abrupt closure of the garage, and the infiltration of parking in the neighborhoods. These are issues that, as abutting ward counselors, Counsel Hughes and I hear about frequently. When the proposal to move the courthouse was opposed by the neighbors, the MBTA listened and put forth the RFP process. And as a result of the process, the MBTA has selected Atlantic Development. The approval process that's required for any project on this property is extensive. This body has designated the planning board to review. And in addition to the applicant's team and the city department head's input, the applicant is required to fund a full peer review, including a traffic study. All of the documentation will be available online. When these projects are in Ward One, I've always loaded everything onto my website, and I make it convenient, and I hope that the planning board does so for this project. Public hearings will be required, and I'm sure when full design is ready, Counsel-elect McCarthy and Counsel Hughes will co-host a meeting for neighbors to have a casual opportunity to review the project and get their questions answered before that planning board process begins. Mr. McKinnon, I see in the audience, I do have a few questions. If you'd please come forward. First, I'd like to thank you for always keeping me informed every step of the way. Having a local developer to work with, we can connect with whenever we have a question, gives me great confidence as this project progresses. We have a lot of members of local labor unions here in the audience. This body received a letter from Congressman Lynch relative to consideration of union labor, and you and I have had a conversation a couple of days ago in regards. But I wanted to have this opportunity for you to give this body an update in regards to your conversations with the union labor who's here this evening.
For the record, I'm DJ McKinnon from Atlantic Development. Thank you, Counsel LaForest. As many of you know, we are underway with a... Can you hear it all right?
Yep.
Okay. As many of you know, we're underway with a proposed development in the North Quincy MBTA Station site that has gone through the local review and approval process, is now into the final design process. And as part of that, we have been working through budgeting and initial pricing with all of the local labor unions that wanted to participate on that. We're continuing that process, and we look forward to a competitive bidding of the process in the spring. I've personally met with leaders of all of the local labor unions, continue to meet with them, and look forward to a continued dialogue, and hope that we have a very strong showing of local labor unions on that project. Quincy Center will be a couple of years behind, and we would look forward to a similar process in Quincy Center. I read Congressman Lynch's letter, and I think, thought it was well drafted, and we look forward to working together in the spirit of that.
Great. I guess I want to understand, we've seen designs out there, we've seen phase one, phase two, phase three, and as part of the RFP process, you had benchmarks to present to the MBTA. Yet, when people see, or my constituents see a rendering, they see that as the done deal. And for those of us who have gone through the planning board process and understand the extensive design process or where you begin before you get to your construction drawings that you can put out to competitive bid with the local labor unions, you begin the process. Where would you say your design percentage is to date?
For Quincy Center?
For Quincy Center.
It's, on a percentage basis, it's probably at about a 5% stage. It's a very, very preliminary stage. The approach that we took was to look at the design guidelines and the urban redevelopment plan from a size and massing standpoint and uses, and develop some very early massing diagrams based on that. They actually are well within, in fact, less than what is allowed under the zoning. At the same time, we've got initial feedback, including from this council two weeks ago. One item that we took to heart in particular was we had an initial phase of approximately 300 apartments, followed by a second phase of 300 apartments, and then a third phase of 225,000 feet of office space. You know, based on those comments, we're basically revised our concept that we're working on so that we'd have, we'd drop the apartments in half to one phase of 300 apartments, and then looking to replace the second phase of 300 apartments with some form of commercial space. Obviously, that's subject to, you know, market demand, market conditions that we would then look ahead towards.
So, 5% preliminary design...
Mm-hmm.
Is where we're at. So 5% preliminary design is where we're at today. A lot of work ahead of you.
Absolutely.
Talk us about the timeline for you to get to 100% design.
You know, hopefully, if we're successful tonight with the consent vote, we would then immediately start into more of a concept design phase, study some of the massing, try to, you know, study matters such as, you know, entrances, exits. In this area, we're very interested in making sure all the pedestrian flow works well, tying it into the new city park that's being built. Many of those elements, working on the revised bus location to make sure that that works. So we really start with kind of the bigger items from a master planning standpoint, and from there start to develop concepts for buildings that could go on top of that. As part of that process, we would look to, you know, start early discussions with the planning staff of the city. At the same time, we would like to reach out and meet with the neighborhood to get neighborhood input. And then, on such a, you know, kind of a large and very focused project on the downtown area, I think what we'd like to do is set up a schedule to come back in front of the City Council periodically as part of a review process to seek input from the City Council.
When would you envision being at the point you'll have plans to present to the neighborhood for feedback?
That would be a couple months out because we want to be able to put some thought into those plans. Would like to have, be able to answer questions, particularly some of the early questions that you would typically get, things like, you know, what type of traffic flow, you know, would be projected? You know, how do those entrances and exits work? So that would be a few months out before we could reach a stage where we'd actually have plans developed far enough along where we could be able to answer questions. Those plans would still be very fluid at that stage, so it would allow us to take input from the neighborhood, input from the folks in the planning department, and then really start to work towards more of a, you know, a finished project over time.
So the intent would then, neighborhood meeting, neighborhood feedback, planning staff meetings, which most projects do, prior to, you know, pre-filing meetings with the Planning Board. So you'd be looking at the, let's say, I mean, we all know when project development timelines fluctuate, but if we are going on, say, three months to a neighborhood meeting, would we be looking at four to five months for our Planning Board filing?
I would say at the earliest, it could be...
That would be the earliest.
That would be the earliest. But, you know, we'd like to, in the spring, start the process with the neighborhood. Maybe, you know, what we did on North Quincy, we thought it was very helpful, was have, you know, some preliminary meetings with the Planning Board, so before we actually do a formal filing, you know, work with them on some concepts and take some of their input at the same time.
And so as you're talking about, part of your feedback and your due diligence being traffic and egress and flow and major changes with moving the bus flow, the Planning Board also requires a full peer review for your traffic study. So this gives you time to develop the data with your project team, and then we'll also, at Planning Board time, have a full peer review funded by yourself, the developer, for the benefit of the city and the abutting area.
Yes.
The other thing that I think I wanted to understand, well, actually, I want, one other point I want to make, I serve on the City's Affordable Housing Trust, and you and I have had a conversation about, because this is public lands, the URDP to date in downtown does not require affordable housing onsite. Yet this project, because it is state land, you will then be meeting that inclusionary zoning ordinance that we have citywide, 10% of those units will be deemed affordable.
Yes.
And you'll be hosting those onsite, so those will be onsite units?
Yes.
I know that the Affordable Housing Trust Committee will be happy to hear of that. I guess I also want to understand what conditions would bring you back before this body for another vote. So you talked about having kind of a check-in, which we've done with other projects that we've wanted to bring back.
Yeah, there are also elements of the reconstruction of the MBTA station, relocation of the bus, upgrade of the station itself, that would likely qualify for certain types of federal and state grants. So we would expect to come before this body to discuss those.
Okay.
There's one federal grant that's already been granted. It's a $4.2 million tiger grant that relates to relocation of the bus. The city had put that in place when they were studying one of the prior proposals.
And who is the grant awarded to? Is that a municipal award, or is that to the private developer? Who manages that grant?
I know it was specific to the project. I'm not sure of the details beyond that.
So I think what's to understand is, this is a consent vote. This puts you forth in the next step in the process. Talk to me about how this is an important vote for you to get forward for the next step, and why, you know, the time is now for that process to proceed.
Well, yeah, without this vote, we actually can't move forward.
So 5% design, there's a lot of work to be done to go forward.
Yes. And then, we also have a pretty strict timetable with the MBTA because, you know, as most people know, the MBTA is under contract now. They're demolishing the upper three levels of the garage and stopping at that point. One of the other tasks that needs to be done right away is a structural analysis of what the MBTA is leaving, along with a plan on how that is addressed. Other features that need to be done by the developer on the station are upgrading it for improved access off of the platform, ADA upgrades, ventilation, fire safety. So there are a number of upgrades to the station itself that the T is not doing and has not funded, that they're relying on the developer to do those. So we need to be able to move forward with that whole process as well.
At what point are you at your contract with the T? So you've been awarded the RFP.
Yep.
You've made commitments upon receipt of the award, that this body allows the project to proceed, that you, the developer, the private developer, are going to, in phase 1, make these upgrades to the station. So that in the timeline would be when?
Okay. So just walking through the steps, they made the designation. The next step, which we're dealing with right now, is the consent vote. With that, we can then enter into a development agreement with the MBTA. Development agreement is similar to kind of a purchase and sale agreement. Obviously, in this case, we're not purchasing, so it's a long-term lease agreement. But basically, the development agreement has those type of provisions in it. And within that, our first phase with the MBTA is doing the full comprehensive analysis of the station, along with the design of the relocated busway. That can be done kind of in parallel with the early discussions with people in the city, with the neighborhood, and the planning staff, and so forth. Ultimately, once we work through a process and are ready to start construction, the first phase of construction would be relocating the buses and upgrading the station. All that work needs to be done in the first phase for the T by us. And then, we could then go ahead, which is basically the second phase, but it would be, you know, the first phase of our development could occur at that point in time. So all the work for the T has to be done. At the same time, all the operations for the T have to stay in place, so there's no shutdown of the station, there's no shutdown of the buses, while all our work would be done.
And when do you, when, what is the timeline to assign the development agreement? Assuming consent vote granted tonight, what would then be the timeline for that?
As soon as it's ready for execution with the T, yes.
Okay.
We've gone through this process with them before, obviously, in North Quincy, so...
I guess I also just wanted to understand, if the consent vote wasn't granted this evening, what is your understanding the alternatives are? So that would then halt development and keep, the MBTA has made a commitment for funding to demolish the three stories of the structure and do nothing more than that. What's your understanding for our alternative?
I think if we don't have consent to move forward, then, you know, we don't have a project at that point, so we're basically out of the project. And I know the T is under contract to demolish those three levels of the garage, so that work would continue, and they would end at that point.
So with the consent vote this evening, with knowing your timeline for permitting the project, knowing the work that needs to be done, preliminary work, as like you mentioned, and you and I have had discussions about the structural analysis and what the deck can handle and development above, when would you envision timeline for the station upgrades to take place?
Okay. So the T has told us that their schedule for demolition is to basically do the demolition during Calendee at 2018, and right now, they're planning to be done towards the end of 2018. Ideally, if we were able to work through a plan that is acceptable to the city, to the neighbors, meets the market demand, we would like to start construction at the beginning, as early as the beginning of 2019, subject to the MBTA completing their demolition. While we're under, and that first phase starting in 2019 would be the upgrades to the station itself, doing all the T work, that's probably about a year's worth of work to upgrade the station, relocate the buses. So then, the private development part of it would probably start towards the end of 2019, or possibly into 2020.
You have a long process ahead of you, Mr. McKinnon. This vote is the start of the process. It gives you the developer, who this city has worked very well with in the past, the ability to move forward on your due diligence before any actual plans are finalized. You've clearly laid that out for us this evening. With that, Madam President, I'd like to make a motion for approval this evening. Thank you.
Okay. So motion to approve by Counselor Forrest. Is there a second?
Thank you.
Seconded by Counselor Harris. Further discussion, Counselor DeBarna.
Thank you, Madam President. Let's get back, oh, DJ. DJ, if I could, I would like to ask you a couple of questions.
Sure.
Going back to last meeting of two weeks ago, and basically, we spoke about the Patriot Ledger coming out with 600 units of apartments, 600 units, I mean, 600 parking spots with office and retail slash commercial phases. Really, so what we've negotiated, what I've spoke to you about is, the residents and the citizens of the city do not feel comfortable with 600 units going into that site over there. And you've been able to negotiate down to half of it.
Correct.
So we basically only have a verbal agreement that you're going to stick with the 300 units of apartments. Is that correct? Now...
Yes, although I'm happy to work with the city solicitor and put that in some form that would be acceptable to you.
That would be great, if you could. I mean, I would like to see through, you know, half of what you propose that you're going to do, then have the 600 units come up.
We would be happy to put that in writing with the city solicitor to cap it at 300 apartments.
And if we could, you spoke a little bit about the retail and the commercial base of it, and I'll be perfectly honest with you, we've had a boom of apartments that have been put into the city, and we're still waiting on the commercial growth. And I'm looking forward to seeing commercial in the downtown, the URDP. And in this, are you looking to put in office retail slash commercial in this?
I think what we'd like to do is work on a plan that would include those elements. Just kind of two parts to it. Obviously, we need to come up with a plan that works and functions with the city, with the people that would potentially use it and live in the area, and that also has enough appeal to attract potential tenants to the site. So we would look to try to develop that plan, and simultaneously with that, seeing if we can actually, you know, attract tenants. Commercial office in particular, you know, when you start to look at a couple hundred thousand feet of it, it's just, it's too much risk to do that on a speculative basis, so you would look to try to attract a tenant for at least a substantial portion of it before you could construct it. You can go through the planning of it and try to come up with a concept that works, but before you start construction, you really need some anchor tenant.
Now, the MBTA is interested in 600 units, I mean, 600 units of apartments at the same time with 600 parking spaces. Are you looking to still pursue the 600 parking spaces? How, I mean, deemed under 300 units that you would propose to go for apartments, you're looking at .75 to 1.25 of parking. So roughly, say, 300 parking spots. So you're looking, because in a nutshell, what I'm looking at behind us right here is we're taking down the MBTA garage, which hasn't been functioning since July of 2012. So we are already five years, five and a half years out of, you know, that was produced to provide parking for the residents in the abutting towns to park here in the city. I mean, that's what I'm looking to pursue forward. Are you looking to pursue that?
Yes. Our concept plan, the first phase of apartments for approximately 300, is actually in the area of the current buses. And as part of that plan, the concept that we had submitted, the parking for that phase of apartments is actually beneath the building.
Yes.
Similar to the apartments that are right next to it. So that can be accommodated there. What we've found in our North Quincy project, and are seeing kind of in the marketplace, is a ratio of about .75 spaces per unit for full-time spaces seems to work. Having another half a space, or .5 spaces for night and weekend parking, is enough to supplement it. The night and weekend parking in North Quincy is an example, we're doing with the MBTA spaces because they're full during the day with people taking the red line, and then they're available, there's plenty of available. What we have in Quincy Center is an opportunity, and it's, as we study it, we would like to follow up with the city and, you know, potentially even come back to this body to discuss it. The existing station, once they rip down, once they remove three levels of parking, they're leaving a structure that has parking at the turnstile level, and then essentially has the roof above it, which was used for parking. So the combination of those two areas has about 275 or close to 300 spaces that might be available with, after we do the structural analysis and actually determine what needs to be upgraded. So for our first phase, if we could use some of the remaining parking at the station once it's upgraded for the night and weekend parking, we believe there is parking available that we could work, you know, with the city to try to come up with an appropriate use. If we go above that with some type of commercial space, we're going to have to analyze the commercial space and come up with an appropriate balance to make sure that additional parking is provided for the commercial space. But if there truly is that need for the municipal parking, you know, we're happy to work with the city on that as well.
You spoke a little bit about the rerouting of the buses, and we're a little ahead of what we're supposed to be talking about, where there's abutters up on Hospital Hill that are concerned with the rerouting. Is there going to be a public process or input on that procedure, if it even is going to be deemed?
No, absolutely. That would be required, would be doing that both with the neighborhood, with the planning process. A couple of comments I can make on that. You know, we looked at the original concept that had been put forward by the city to put the buses on Bergen Parkway, and after studying it, we think we've come up with a couple of features that look very worthwhile to pursue. One is, the actual entryway for the buses coming off Bergen Parkway would be kind of a one-way entry point, pretty much behind City Hall. So buses in both directions would actually essentially come in, they would be facing City Hall, and then be routed along the side of the existing station. So once the station is demolished, the upper floors between the station and Bergen Parkway is about 40 feet in width. But Bergen Parkway along the station is actually higher than the turnstiles in the paper. So our concept was to route the buses in on Bergen Parkway, run them along the station, but at a depressed level. So the buses would actually be below Bergen Parkway, and then, as they run along Bergen Parkway, and they come towards the end of the station, then actually go across the tracks and have the exiting traffic on Dimmock Street. By doing that, we're not exiting the traffic out onto Bergen Parkway towards the neighborhood. Obviously, vehicles that need to go towards Hancock Street could head in that direction. Vehicles that need to go to Bergen Parkway could, but it acts, we had a traffic engineer come up with this initial concept. It requires further analysis and study, but the effort was to basically try to shield the buses along the Bergen Parkway area by depressing them down. It also has the benefit of being at the same elevation as the turnstile, so people getting on and off the buses are at the same elevation as the turnstiles, and then have the exiting point on Dimmock Street where we don't have any residences, and it provides more flexibility and flow.
As we're doing more construction, when I first got onto the council two years ago, my counselor-at-large, Joe Finn, asked me to help in cosponsoring a resolution and an order on the underground economy, the misclassification of employees on construction sites, which we also deliberated quite a bit with Counselor Palmucci with the Oversight Committee. And, you know, that is important to me, to make sure that, you know, people are paying into workers' compensation, the correct people are on these jobs, and there's some type of oversight. And that's really important, on top of advocating for local jobs, citizens of the city and abutting towns and surrounding municipalities. So I'm going to be looking to really push that forward. Now, I'm taking a step back and thinking about the air rights vote that we did last year at North Quincy's air rights, which is very similar to what we're doing here tonight. You spoke about coming back to this body in 60 to 90 days to give us an overview. I haven't gotten an overview since the North Quincy project on what's updated with that. Can you give me a little insight on the North Quincy's air rights and where we're going in that direction?
So in North Quincy, we've gone through the local permitting process with the Planning Board. All those permits are in place, as well as through the state permitting process, through the MEPA environmental review process. So essentially, all the permits are in place. With the permits in place, we then got into the detailed design process of that development, and we're kind of well into that at this point. We'll be at a point where the plans will be basically 100% finished towards the end of January, beginning of February, and that's when they'll actually go out for a full bidding process. The construction start looks like it's probably going to be around a May timeframe. Part of it... Part of that is in discussions with the T. They've actually asked us to delay it a few months beyond where we might have started because of the shutdown that's going to take place at Wallaston. As many of you know, after the first of the year, the Wallaston Station is being shut down. They're going to be rerouting people to the Wallaston Station with shuttle buses. They wanted that operation to get up and running before we started construction, for a few months before we started construction of the North Quincy Station. So, overall, construction probably start around, roughly in May or maybe even June timetable. The first phase of construction in North Quincy is going to be rerouting of the main city drainage lines that come through that site. So, all those neighborhoods have kind of an antiquated drainage system. We work closely with the Planning Department and DPW to come up with a design for new major drainage lines. They're large, they're five, six feet in diameter, and they're down deep. So, those pipes have to go in first. Then we have a soil reinforcement project, because the soils are not that good in North Quincy. We, and as part of that, we then go with the very first phase there is to build a new parking garage. It'll take from when we start construction to the new parking garage being open and operational, it's about a 12 to 14-month period. But that's the first element that has to open on that development. And then, roughly about a year after that, we'll have our first phase of the private construction will open between the apartments and the retail. And then it'll be about a two-year rollout for the balance of the apartments to open on that site. So, looking at, you know, construction start basically, you know, May-June 2018. Garage to open about 12 to 14 months after that, so say summer of 2019. And then, first phase of residential and retail to open about a year after that.
During the construction of this North Quincy site, where are the construction workers going to park?
So, we have a, we have a plan that during the site work piece of it, we're able to manage the parking on-site for the construction workers. You have a lot of heavy equipment, a lot of big equipment on the site, but we have places that we feel that we can put those workers. When the garage opens, we replace all 850 parking spaces that the T has in the garage, but then we have roughly about 400 spaces in addition to that, that are for the future residents. So, during our construction of the private construction, we'll have those 400 spaces available so the construction workers can park on-site when we bring on, you know, the steel workers, the iron workers, concrete workers, and so forth. So, we'll have parking on-site in the garage for those workers.
What about Squanton Point Park? Is there any consideration to use that facility for, or that parking lot for parking, and then maybe transporting in on shuttleways? Is there any deliberation with that?
So, what happens with our development, we have a big incentive from the T to get our development done as soon as possible, because the parking that we interrupt, we actually have to pay for on a daily basis.
Sure.
Now, separate from that, we understand the T is in discussions where they believe it's DCR that controls the Squanton Point Park, and is trying to come up with a plan. I think, you know, I don't know exactly where that stands, other than I know that's in discussion. They're trying to come up with a plan to use Squanton Point Park, basically, at the same time that we would ultimately start construction. You know, hopefully, with Squanton Point Park, they would have, I think they're talking about shuttles that could bring them into different locations, North Quincy as well as probably others. But at the same time, it would also be a great opportunity to help expand the boat use by having commuters park right there and having the boat. They may well use that as well.
As we're talking, a lot of moving parts, a lot of constituency, a lot of residents are asking about all these moving parts with Wallaston T Station being, you know, 20-month, you know, refurbishing of the whole station, you know, taking down the Quincy Center garage at the same time with all the other construction that's going on in the city. A lot of the public wants to know these questions. This is the first I've really heard of it in the year time that North Quincy's been underway a year ago with our air rights vote. So, I'm glad we're talking a little bit about this. You were talking about giving updates for the Quincy Center. I, since you're up there, I want to talk a little bit about North Quincy, you know, but I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to stop right there, and you answered all my questions, you've done some consideration, we've talked offline about what you're pursuing and what you're looking to do down the road, and, you know, it's a good faith, I guess you could call commitment, verbal agreement here that we have here tonight. So, with that, thank you, Madam President.
Counselor Finn.
Thank you, Madam President. And actually, at some point, I really need to speak with Counselor Temens, but again, Mr. McKinnon, what is the MBTA's philosophy or whatever around not having any on-site T parking any longer in that site? What, how are they thinking in terms of how they can deal with that? Because again, a lot of that isn't about commuter transit-oriented types of things, per se. It's actually people coming in to Quincy, looking for T, to ride the T, and what, how are they going to handle that in the future moving forward?
I can't speak for the MBTA, and I will say I was somewhat surprised when the RFP came out and there's no requirement for MBTA parking. As part of our RFP response, we did build in that we did want to, you know, have a discussion with the city, see if we could work with the city on creating a certain level of municipal parking, and that I think initially would like to try to do that in what remains of the station, which is about 275 spaces. I guess in our mind, you know, we know the city's building a brand-new parking garage over in the Hancock Lot. There's other, you know, parking in and around the city. We actually think it's a good opportunity to try to work with the city on those other 275 spaces. You know, some of the options would include either us operating it, similar to the way things will happen in North Quincy. We're also very open to the idea, and would clearly have to come back to this body if it's an approach they want to take to having the city operate it. You know, there is some thought that the city would be a better one to manage some of this public parking. Obviously, if we're operating it solely for our own purposes, but having it as daily parking, we want to have it full all the time to pay for it. If the city, on the other hand, is trying to balance needs between their new garage and a garage in this location, you know, they may manage it in a little bit different way in the pricing structure or the timing for people to stay there. Maybe it's more short-term parking for people coming to City Hall. But clearly, you know, we did put in our RFP that we wanted to try to coordinate with the city on that, and would love to have that discussion.
And I assume that means coordinating with the MBTA as well?
Well, no, they actually don't have any, they've taken it off the table. They've basically said, "Take the station and, you know, make it," I mean, one of the other proposals that was submitted was to take the remaining station and the parking and use that strictly for the private development. We didn't make that proposal. Our proposal was to do our parking in the first phase under the structure and try to work with the city. But no, there's absolute, the T is not requiring any parking for commuters at that location.
Thank you. I'm also, could I, again, Mr. Temens?
Solicitor Temens.
Good evening.
Thank you. Again, Mr. Temens, again, assuming that that MBTA owned that specific station, which it does, but assuming for a moment that we did not have this enabling legis, or not enabling legislation, but these Acts of 196, Special Legislation of 1967, we wouldn't even be here this evening, correct?
Correct.
So, essentially, what we're trying to do is focus again, and you were saying this last week, but, well, last time, but part of the difficulty I was having was, it seemed to me to be incongruent with the order in terms of the way it was written between, and again, including language from both of those two specific Acts that apply to this. And so, that was really part of it, the confusion from my perspective, because there was a section that was included in the original order that says, "And any off-street parking area or facilities owned by the city which abuts said rapid transit or other transportation facilities." In that sense, what I thought or assumed, we were kind of also granting not only our consent to their air rights, but we were also surrendering the rights of our own in some way. So, part of the thing I just really want to be very clear about is that, as this is structured, and I realize this is difficult when you're dealing with something that was written in 1967 in terms of what was the city and what was the MBTA's at any one particular point, and I also know there's probably some interesting issues around title that have to be considered as you move forward, but the city would never convey any rights or convey any property, so to speak, without having to come back to the city council, correct?
Correct. And there's no such interest in play here, although I do understand why you thought with that language that might be the case. The language was extracted directly from the Special Acts, and the Special Acts were addressing the situation at the time. So, I just did that for consistency purpose. But the fact of the matter is that, since the Special Acts were enacted, the city of Quincy used to own the land and the parking garage that's down here behind Stop &amp; Shop, and under the Sheets administration, all of that was sold. That's the primary chunk of land that's being referenced in the Special Acts.
So, again, and then also that is, in the case of any types of joint leases or whatever, that was in reference to that specific?
Right. And that was one of the things I was trying to get into last week, our last meeting, that not only do you have what's called the fee interest, like the ownership interest in the land, but you could have leasehold interests implicated. Well, in this particular case, there's a little bit of sloppiness out back in terms of who owns what, because back at the time, there were some deeds that were prepared, but they're not recorded and dead, and I'm not sure why. So, but the majority of the land, the vast majority, with the exception of some land out back, is all owned by the T.
Right.
And what we're doing essentially is just giving them the right to move forward with the planning of a project and the analysis of a project. But when you look in the Special Act, it also says that it's subject to all applicable city board review.
Well, I mean, this is the, I mean, the genius of these Acts are incredible, because it also submits them to taxation, which otherwise we'd be in no position to do, correct? It also submits it to all zoning requirements of the city of Quincy, which, apart from these Acts, we'd be in no position to do. Is that, is that accurate?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah. But hypothetically speaking, and this is only hypothetically speaking based on what you've described to me, the situation that exists, but in the event that there was any type of joint lease component that arose through this project in any way, shape, or form, you would still need to come back to the city council body for that.
Well, I'm not sure what you mean about that, only because the current project is going to be pretty much exclusively on T land.
No, I understand that.
Okay.
But again, the Acts of 537 are talking about those types of arrangements.
If there's something we're signing on to, then yes.
Okay, great.
And I also know the mayor has instructed that I advise this body that, you know, your inquisitiveness on this issue and discussions with Mr. Shea, the council attorney, he has said that they would come back, and the developer has committed to coming back to this body if there's any sort of interest in Quincy-owned land implicated in the future development.
Well, to end the confusion, one of the things I would like to do is submit an amendment that basically takes out some of the 537 language that's in there, beginning after, if you see the session, it says "light and air," and then it says, "And any off-street parking area or facilities owned by the city which abuts said rapid transit or other transportation facilities." I would motion that that be struck, and that we probably should also, again, I would, as part of that same motion, strike the 537 and just talk about, under the provisions of Chapter 547. So, for all intents and purposes, what, it's very clear, all we're consenting to is to MBTA's air rights. So, I would make that as a motion.
Okay, a motion to amend by Counselor Finn, seconded by Counselor Palmucci on the motion to amend. Anyone wishing to be heard? Okay, Madam Clerk, call the row.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Crowe.
Yes.
Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Finn.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel LaFars.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Nine members on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Are you done? Counsel Finn?
Well, you know, I was thinking about it, but I do want to echo the concerns that my colleague, Counselor DeBona, has said as well, particularly in relation to the consideration that's being made in terms of the track history of any contractors related to this, specifically that, you know, it is part of the community standards here, that, you know, we should be working with those people who play by the rules, and not with those entities that are undercutting others. So, again, but aside from that, I'm set. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Liang. Enough. All right, enough. Counsel Liang.
Thank you, Madam President. It's hard to follow, applause. I want to start by just making it very clear that I don't not want to see something redeveloped in Quincy Center. I mean, my family's own business is down here for 10-plus years, and we've seen the changes that we've seen over the years, both in my time in the private sector and now in the public sector. And this looks god-awful. We all know that, we can all agree to that. We want to see something developed here. My stance on this, though, is that I just want to make sure that it's done the right way. With all due respect to you, DJ, you know, I've worked with you, I've gotten to know you over the last couple of years. This is not a question of your judgment or your intent for the space that's going to be developed over here. You know, in hearing the conversations that have been had, some promises seem to have been made, whether it's the height, or the number of apartment units, or the work that's going to be done on this project. And I do want to take a moment to be just acknowledging of the folks that have taken the time to come out here tonight. I think it's great, of course, if you can have a commitment and a stake in the project because you live in the area, who better to build something that they know they're going to see day in and day out? And I do think that's wonderful, and we've obviously had those conversations, and you've taken that into consideration. But my stance on this is that, given the language that's in front of us, we keep being told it's a step in the process to do the feasibility studies that you have to do, to make sure that the project you want to see and that we want to see is going to be, in fact, feasible. We don't know at this stage right now exactly the cost of taking down what's currently there, putting up a new project, what our commitment is going to be as a city, until the feasibility study is done. So, you are taking a risk. We've talked, you're putting in, you know, half a million dollars to do the study to make sure it's possible, but we're not at that point yet. And to say that giving the air rights or consenting to the air rights is the only way to show our commitment as a body and our commitment as a city, I think is outrageous. I think there's another way that we can show we are committed to getting something developed here by just saying through an MOU or an LOI, "We are committed to seeing something developed here." But I think that both us and the developers have, you know, have a stake in this and should be able to see the results of that feasibility study before we can agree to saying, "Yes, here are the air rights entering into this lease agreement." I feel as though if we consent to the air rights before the feasibility study, we are essentially giving away an asset that we don't know the value of yet. We are committing to a project where we do not understand, right now financially, what we're committing the city to and what we're putting us at stake for. You know, I mean, once the feasibility study is done, it can come back, and it could be extremely costly for you as a developer to move forward with this project. It could be extremely costly, it could be cost prohibitive at that point. We don't know until we do this feasibility study. The MBTA is putting an extensive amount of requirements on any developer that decides to come here with the work that has to be done to the station itself, independent of any project outside of that station. The MBTA is putting on a lot of requirements just for the platform, accessibility. So, you factor that in to the project as well. Again, the financial commitment is unknown at this point. And while I think the intent is good to lower the amount of units we're going to have, to go the direction that we're going in to make sure that the space is built properly, when it, if and when it comes back that financially, it's not going to be possible to reduce those number of units, because maybe you're going to be taking a loss for whatever reason, you know, what do we do at that point? You know, do we say, "No, you still have to keep it at 300, but you're going to be getting a loss on the project?" I mean, that's not fair to you as well. So, I think, again, at the end of the day, there are other ways that we can say, "We are going to be committed to developing something here, we are committed to having Atlantic and Bezuto move forward with the feasibility study, and we are committed to seeing this station redone," without saying, "Okay, here are the air rights, do whatever you need to do," but we don't know the cost to the city, to the taxpayers, and frankly, to yourselves as well as the developer and as the investor. I know we had talked tonight about council input and what that's going to look like down the line. You had mentioned that you are committed to coming back in front of this body to give us updates, so that we can give you feedback and input for review to consider, but that's exactly what that is. It's just feedback. At that point, I can stand up here and say, "No, that looks great, it looks wonderful," or, "No, you've got to change this." or no, you've got to change this. It's just input at that point. We have no other ability, unless there is a financial agreement that has to come in front of us, that we have that real say, that we have that real leverage, to be able to negotiate on behalf of the residents here in this city. Again, this is not to say that the intent is going to be to do everything that we don't want to see, that that's not what I'm trying to say. What I'm just saying is that we have the air rights, the air rights are going to be that step that gives the MBTA the ability to lease out the space with Atlantic and Bezuto. We're not at that place yet where we are able to say, this is the full project, this looks wonderful, we'll go ahead and lease it out and get it done in the next night, and for the next 99 years. The place that we're in right now is, let's do a feasibility study to understand what this project will look like. And at those early stages, you need to get a commitment from the city, you need to get a consent from us that we're willing to move forward, and I think we should be doing just that, putting up an MOU to show that we are consenting to move forward. I don't think that the air rights are the way to move forward on that. Again, we're giving away an asset that we have, this is the only asset we have with respect to our involvement with this project, and I think there are procedurally better steps we can take to move this forward. So I will not be in support of this. I do believe that we can, again, find better ways to commit to moving forward without relinquishing our only asset in this project in order to protect the residents of this city and to ensure that after the feasibility study, when we have a better understanding of the financial commitment that's going to be in front of us, then we can move forward on it. Thank you, Madam President.
Enough, enough, enough. Anyone else? Anyone else wishing to be heard? Anyone else wishing to be heard? All right, Madam Clerk, if you'll call. Did you wish to speak?
I'm kind of lost in the crowd.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll be brief in my comments. You know, I think that, for me personally, I've learned, the most I've learned about this project probably here this evening. And as many folks know, you know, I would be categorized as probably more of a reflective thinker. I will say, and I heard it said here this evening, that, you know, Mr. McKinnon, I think that, you know, if there was a developer to move this concept forward, I think you're the right guy for the job. I mean, you have a track record in the city, you know, in my district, I know you're capable, and I think most importantly, you're able to, you know, put together the financing package, which is probably the most critical when undertaking a development of this magnitude. You know, we talked about, and I'm sure everyone sees by now, the kind of community standard here, and how important as we, you know, in my eyes, continue to build out the city, you know, for the future generations that, you know, we're taking the time to recognize, you know, the value of putting the right people on the job and, you know, the significance of skilled labor, you know, which I heard is our, has been articulated here this evening. Why I struggled with this particular concept, for me anyways, and again, you know, Counsel DeBona hit on some of the consistent feedback that we get from residents, you know, there's a lot going on in the city. You could put a period end of story there, but it's absolutely true, and there's not a, a week goes by that, you know, I'm getting questions about displacement that comes with construction. However, when you're moving the city forward, and I do, I give, you know, Mayor Koch kudos for taking the ball and trying to advance the city, you know, and pull this whole downtown revitalization off. But I also realize that there's many, many moving parts, and, you know, when I consider this particular project, you know, the, some of the aforementioned repairs, revitalizations going on at the T, what we have going on downtown, I'm still yet to even see a parking plan, a formalized parking plan for what is currently going downtown and causing displacement for folks from day to day. So I have some trepidation, you know, with, and I know it's not tomorrow that you would start construction, but, you know, in the relatively foreseeable future, you know, essentially creating a construction project out back there. But, you know, when I consider just about sort of the sequencing, you know, if we rewind to where we were two weeks ago, I learn about, you know, the awarding of the bid on a Thursday. It's on the agenda for a Friday and up for a vote that's tabled, but up for a vote on Monday to essentially, you know, make a decision that sets the course for the next 200 years. And, you know, the feedback that I've gotten from folks who are tuned in to some of the media that's out there was, they just want to know, A, what's going on, and B, how they can get involved. And well, you know, I heard it loud and clear, what Counsel LaForest had alluded to in her preliminary remarks of when the public comes into play and that we're just talking about the air rights. I kind of take a different sort of thought process around that, meaning, you know, this is going to be an evolving conversation, maybe it started two weeks ago, maybe it starts tonight, but, you know, I have received a fair amount of email inquiries and telephone calls. One is recently, it's three and a half hours ago, just wondering what's going on tonight, and, you know, an individual family up in Ward 2, and I really didn't have much answers for them. So with that, I mean, we have a lot going on. I support Counsel Liang 125%. I think something should be built out back there. What I disagree with is the process and kind of the expediency that's got us to where we are tonight. I think that, you know, for me, I just think it needs to be a little more kind of thoughtful, and the public needs to be a little more involved preliminarily, whether or not, you know, your due diligence comes back as a go-ahead or we're out. I think the public, you know, should be involved if they want, and that's just my perspective, and it's always been as a ward counselor, and I just wanted to express that. Nothing to do with the development team, I think the development team, again, is the right one to move it forward. I just, you know, the process that's led us up to this evening is something that, you know, I'm just not comfortable with. So, thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Counselor Kane.
No.
Counselor Crowe.
No.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor LaForest.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Six members, it passes.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Any further reports of committees? Ordinance Committee, Counselor LaForest.
The final traffic of the year in Ward 3, Council Order 2017-181 to add handicap parking at 155 Farrington Street, I move positive recommendation.
Positive recommendation by Counselor LaForest, seconded by Counselor Harris. On the motion, Madam Clerk?
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
President, oh, sorry, excuse me. Counselor LaForest.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Eight members, passes.
Great. I believe that's the only report from the ordinance committee. Presentation of petitions, memorials, and remonstrance. Counselor Finn.
At some point, I'm not certain where, but I would love to just give my final comments to you folks at some point, if I could.
Now would be fine.
Is that a good time? All right.
Yes. Well, let's, actually, if I could just, if I could, would I, would you mind to see the floor to some other folks, some other items of business at this time? Anyone else? Petitions, memorials, remonstrance? Yes.
Yeah, I wanted to get somebody hard time to like. Out because it'd be hard afterwards.
I don't care.
I wanted to follow up on behalf, it was more of old business, Council Order 2016-142, which was a resolution that this body passed, I believe unanimously, in May of 2016, asking for the administration to, take your time, guys, the administration to review and evaluate the 121A tax incentives and provide the council with an analysis of how such incentives may be used in the Quincy Center revitalization and the advisability of same. We've never gotten a report. This is the last evening of the legislative session, and I was going to inquire of the mayor's representative what we can expect in the new term relative to that or why that didn't. Is there anyone from the mayor's office that would like to speak?
I don't see anybody here presently.
Oh.
I know. Maybe we can get an update later. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, all right. He will be back, perhaps.
Hopefully not.
Okay. Anyone else? Petitions, memorials, remonstrance? Well, I do have a memorial. As many folks know, Patricia Hannan, wife of former Mayor Walter Hannan, did pass away. Mrs. Hannan was born in Boston in 1931. She raised her five children here in Quincy, clearly served many roles here in the city of Quincy, wife, mother, first lady here in our city, and grandmother, and she was an amazing woman with a strong faith and a beautiful family that surrounded her, and certainly our thoughts and prayers are with the Hannan family as well as, as well as with Mayor Hannan. It's a very difficult time of the year for families who lose people, so our thoughts and prayers are with them. I also just wanted to just remind folks about, two years ago, we lost a colleague, you know, Brian McNamara, at this time of the year, and I just, we've mentioned him so often with this PUD stuff, and he just kept coming up in my, in my mind, and I just, you know, wanted folks to sort of just remember him and his service. I know he served with Joe and with Margaret, and sometimes batted heads, but, but, but he was a passionate advocate, and just, just in memorial, just to think about Counselor McNamara over these next couple of days, but. So at this time, obviously, we have two colleagues who are moving on, and we are very sad to see them go, certainly I am, and I know other folks want to express their gratitude and thoughts to Counselor Finn and Counselor LaForest, but I'm going to turn it over to them first. So Counselor Finn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, for this opportunity to take my leave, so to speak. Before I do anything else, I want to recognize Joe Doyle, who's sitting here.
He is.
Again, who, Joe's been with me from the beginning, and he's the only guy that showed up tonight to see me on my.
We like Joe Doyle.
And he was here on my first night here, which, again, you know.
We like Joe.
I was just thinking about it, is that, I was just thinking about, the very first council meeting I had to go to was very tough because it was about classification, it had been extended into January, which is rare. So we were all coming in to vote on classification. We had four new counselors, and this place and the classification argument years ago would be mobbed, businessmen yelling at homeowners, back and forth. And the public hearing used to take an hour and a half, so the very first night, it was in a packed gallery, and now here it is on the end night, once again, was a very packed gallery. So it's amazing, you know? And I have to tell you, I leave here a far less arrogant person than when I arrived, quite honestly. There's a couple, obviously, I want to thank my wife Dolores and my family for what they have had to put up with over the years, because it is, it's tremendous sacrifice, even tonight. I've got one kid in a middle school concert, I have another one soloing at her school in a choral group, I have one kid homesick. I mean, again, it's, it takes a lot of time away from family, and I could never have done it without them. I also have to thank a guy who, I think, decided not to show up tonight because of the crowd in some ways, but is Michael Berry. He's the guy who made it all possible for me, quite honestly. The guy is just amazing when it comes to electoral politics, and without him, I never could have made it, nor could have, quite honestly, without the inspiration of Michael Chaney years ago, when he was the city counselor. So I'm grateful for all those people, but, again, I've said this before, and I'll say it to you again, what you do is really difficult. It is incredibly, incredibly hard, and it's funny because there's so many opinions out there, and people have so many opinions, and no matter what you do, you're lucky if you're going to get 50% approval on it, you know? And I've often characterized it this way, is that, you know, people have opinions, you have sacrificed the luxury of opinion to make decisions, and those decisions are never easy. I mean, look what we just went through. These decisions are never, ever easy, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate what you do and how much more, 16 years later, I appreciate public life and what goes on in it. But I do think, and I have to say this, is I think we're in very dangerous times, and I often fear, I hope, that it doesn't infect municipal bodies and politics, because this is still probably the purest form of democracy that we have. And that danger I see is when political reason is kind of given, wholly given over to the emotions, then we can have a very, very dangerous situation. And so I just want to thank all of you for, and what an honor it's been to work with all of you, and I honestly have to say, I will pray for you and continue to support all of you who continue this and your life. And again, with that, just thank you so much for what you do, and I prom, I tell you, I'm not going to watch the meetings on TV. So with that, thank you, thank you to everybody. You know, before I, I just, no, one last thing, too. I just have one more thing to say. Can I say, I also want to mention one fact, it just dawned on me, is I also had the honor to work under two mayors, both of whom I respected very much, and despite disagreeing with both of them at different times, I have come to respect them so much, because at the end of the day, they really are the person in the arena in many respects. And, but, none of that should ever defer, deter you from that fundamental role that you have to be a check and balance, no matter who that mayor is, but it has been an honor to work with both those gentlemen, Mayor Phelan and Mayor Koch. So with that, I'm done. Thank you. And thanks for the ovation.
Joe Doyle, you got me in trouble because I told everybody they couldn't come. Krista flew in from Alaska today, I said, please, come on, you guys have dragged us to enough events, so, yes, yes. So it has been the honor of my life to serve as the Ward 1 city councilor these past eight years, and I will always be grateful for the privilege granted me to work on your behalf on so many issues, both large and small. We have certainly been through a lot together over the years, the brutal winter storms in which I worked hard to communicate with my constituents consistently and directly, the many community meetings and regulatory hearings on projects, some we supported together and some we opposed together, the major investments in our schools, parks, seawalls, and other vital infrastructure that I believe will benefit us for generations to come, the day-to-day work responding to concerns and service requests like filling potholes, repairing sidewalks and trimming trees, and of course, the updated FEMA flood maps and coastal issues so important to a city with 27 miles of coastline. So much of the ward, ward counselor work is done outside this council chamber, and I particularly enjoyed working one-on-one with constituents on issues important to them and with so many of our community's nonprofit organizations, and helping raise awareness of their issues, of their missions, most notably to so many have given such help to my constituents, Quincy Community Action, Neighbor Works of the South Shore, the City's Affordable Housing Trust, and each of the neighborhood associations. Thank you to Mayor Koch, his administration, my colleagues here in the city council, our state delegation, and most importantly, my family, my husband Jeff, daughters Kelsey and Krista, my mom Betty, Paula, who surpassed her 100th milestone this year, and my extended family and friends, who have given their love and support to me in every good cause I come across. I'm so grateful for you and all of my constituents. I love our community, and I hope I've shown to you my passion for making it a better place over the years. As I look to 2018, busy being busy is out and living life is in. My best wishes to Counselor-elect Dave McCarthy as Award 1 counselor. I look forward to the day I hand him my cell phone and all my emails get forwarded his way. and all my emails get forwarded his way. If anyone's looking for me, I plan to spend as much time as I can on the ski slopes this winter and out in the water in the summer boating with my family. Thank you all. It's been quite an honor. Thank you.
It was great. I know. Brian, yes. Tom and Jay.
Never missing an opportunity to speak. I'd like to speak about both these councillors and just take a moment to thank them both for their friendship, their service, their collegiality. I'll start with Joe. Oldest first. Joe, I am going to miss most your endless amount of institutional knowledge. Although at times I don't disagree with it, I like having it. It's like a touchstone that we can go to about, you know, how things have been, oh, we've discussed that before, this is, oh, that wasn't a you know, even whether it be in an open meeting or, you know, out of the council chamber, talking about issues and trying to come up with ideas. You've always been a wealth of knowledge to say, well, gee, you know, somebody tried that 10 years ago, it really did not go well for them. So, I would suggest you stay away from that one. Which is always good from, you know, from my perspective when I first came on, having councillors like yourself who approach the job with not only a passion and a desire to help, but also an openness to working with others, with differences of opinion, and really trying to find a positive outcome at the end of the day that was better for the residents of Quincy. It's something that I think, you know, you read in the paper all the time. You'll see snippets from other communities. And there's all this animosity, and there's really just inability to get things done when that's your job. Certainly, you look at a national newspaper, and that's the case. But here, I think we've been very fortunate in the city of Quincy to have leaders like yourself who approach government in a different way, always willing to work with folks. And so, I'll certainly miss that. And you leaving as the dean of the delegation here, so to speak, I think you have set a great example, a fine example, of how we should carry ourselves forward. And I will always try to keep that in mind. You know, from your service as president through some very challenging couple of years, with some serious issues with the downtown, it was very clear you always went back to making sure every councillor got to be heard, regardless of whether you agreed with what they had to say. I know that was something that was very important. It was something that, as an individual councillor, was noted and appreciated. Certainly going to miss, as I said, your collegiality. Also, the occasional obscure philosopher reference. No one I've ever heard of, too, by the way. You could just be, for the past eight years that I've served with you, you could have just been making up philosophers' names in these rubrics. Everyone's like, oh, that's deep. Yeah, Joe knows what he's talking about. He could have made it all up. But I always found myself, if we were on this different side of an issue and both arguing because we cared about it passionately, I always find myself saying, hmm, did I get this one wrong? Why is Joe on the other side of this one? I won't miss that so much. But you've, over the course of your career, have shown an advocacy and a dedication to those with less, obviously, especially for affordable housing and issues surrounding folks who don't have a voice as much as other people may. And the folks who need the voice in a body like this and elsewhere very much. I want to thank you for your career of service and your dedication, and you'll certainly be missed. And Margaret, my friend, my companion. Margaret and I came into the council together. I feel as though we learned almost every lesson together. I thank you for your friendship, your service. It makes me very sad, I'm not going to talk as long as I'm going to talk for Joe, but I've never seen anybody in any walk of life, whether it be any of my daily activities, you know, in any other roles, with as much passion as you have and as much energy as you have. And as I've given you this advice personally over the last eight years, focus the energy on one thing, and you would crush it.
Yeah.
You spread it around to 100 different things, and you make 100 different things better. It's amazing. I get lost in even listening to your stories sometimes about all the things you're doing and you're involved in. It makes me tired just listening. You literally have shown this deep passion for not just Ward One in the city, I mean, but for so many things you've been involved with. But when it comes to Ward One, I mean, talk about knowing what's going on in your ward and literally being involved in everything and anything that needed an extra hand. Whether it's volunteering, you know, spearheading something. You went well above and beyond what a ward councillor needs to do, what a ward councillor has traditionally done. Certainly more than what Hanley and some of the other councillors have done in the past. But you will be missed.
Just kidding.
Thank you for your service.
Counselor Lee, I got to put you on.
Thank you, Madam President. Counselor, I'm going to start with you. I lived in Ward Six my whole life. I was born in Ward One, so I'll take credit for that one. But I met Margaret by way of, in the private sector, when we were having a lot of issues, when Streetworks was here. And I didn't know where to go. I was first starting to work with my family's restaurant group. We had, you know, they might have known, but I had no idea who to call. We had so many issues. And Margaret was the one. You know, she was responsive. She answered my phone calls, she answered my texts. And you know, the restaurant business, we're up until 1 o'clock in the morning, and up early as well. And no matter what time of day it was, no matter what the call was, what it was related to, you know, you were always there to answer our concerns and to help us find the direction that we needed. And I was always so grateful for that, because that actually extended outside of that. And I don't live in your ward. And as a resident of this city, I knew what was going on because I got your email updates. I always looked forward to them. I always knew what was happening, not just in my neighborhood, but across the entire city, because you were always reaching out, whether through that email or just follow up and say hello and see how I was doing. You are just so selfishly committed to saying yes to helping everyone, regardless of where they live, regardless of where they work. If they have an issue in the city, and even outside of the city, and they find a way to find you, you do not know how to say no to them. And I think that's absolutely invaluable as somebody who serves the city, absolutely invaluable to us as a body. And that aspect of it will be greatly missed. I respect Council McCarthy, but I really doubt he's going to be able to fill your shoes. I don't know that anybody could. You are an incredible asset. I take comfort in knowing you're still going to be a resident here, which is wonderful. And I thank you personally for always being so respectful to me as a resident, again, not even being in your ward. You were always there for me, for my family. And I cannot thank you enough for that. Thank you. To my neighbor, I remember when we were first coming to, my first council meeting two years ago, and we carpooled here. You turned around and looked to me and said, "Had you told me when I met you when you were 14 that we'd be going to a meeting together?" I told you, you'd be crazy. And it saddens me to have to say goodbye to you as a colleague. I was very excited to be able to work with you, and I'm disappointed that it's only been a couple of years. But you have always been there for us. I've known you more than half my life. And your dedication to not just the residents, but just to the genuine goodness that you see in people, I think is unmarred by anybody that I've met and anybody that I certainly come across in local government. And I think that is something that I can probably speak on behalf of all of us, that we all strive to do, is to always look at, you know, the facts in front of us, what's going to be best, and how do we all move forward together? And that was the most important thing that you've always taught me is, you know, there's always going to be good intentions, and we have to make sure to do our research, do our homework, and come to the best conclusion and the best decisions that we can make. And you've always been very straightforward. You've always been honest. And you are also just so selfishly passionate about this city. And you were always looking for ways to give back. I can't say enough, again, about your commitment to the city, to your residents, to your neighbors. I know where to find you across the street. So, while you are leaving today, I will still make sure to keep you on the loop on things, and I hope I can make you proud as well as a resident on William Street. And you'll be sorely missed.
You know, you jarred something that I just have to do before I also, I need to thank the Quincy Fire Department, because we actually had a fire in our house yesterday on William Street. And I got to witness that under four-minute response. The Quincy Fire Department was absolutely amazing. And Gary Smith was there, who was on. But just knowing those guys over the years has just been incredible. And fortunately for us, the damage was somewhat limited, you know? So, we're very happy it happened during the day and not at night, because it could have been. But I really did want to, from a William Street resident, because you must have seen our house surrounded by fire trucks, but to thank the Quincy Fire Department for the great work that they do. Sorry.
Thank you, Madam President. Joe Finn, it's a little different being an at-large councillor, because at some point, you're going to have to run against each other. And I remember two and a half years ago, when I came out to run for the seat, I looked Joe in his eyes and I said, "I really want to serve with you. I've watched your work ethic. I see how you campaign. I see how you operate." And he's got a value system and morals that are far beyond this political arena that he goes by, and a set of rules. And I was lucky enough to sit next to him, too. And as a week into being in our first meeting, he says, "Are you interested in cosponsoring an order resolution for the underground economy?" Two at-large councillors together, working on issues that we agree with. And over the last two years of serving with you, I just realized that the book of wealth, the knowledge that this council's going to miss, I'm going to miss, to be able to talk to you a little offline and sit back a little bit and talk, have these conversations. I'm going to really miss that. And I'm happy to have served with you. And I emulate how you operate. And it's a tough arena up here, is sometime in a vote tonight. How do you appease the administration at the same time represent the people? Very hard to really do, very difficult. We saw it here tonight. This guy's been able to do it. We get out on the streets, and you're knocking doors, and you're in a race together, and all you hear is good things. I don't always agree with Joe Finn, but he's honest. And when you get to the doors and the respect that he has for his people he's running with, he always had good things to say about people. And I witnessed it in the first run, running with him. I got to doors, and I was hearing good things. So, I'm going to really miss that. It's different when you're at large and you don't know them. And I do this with Dina in two races. It's different being an at-large, because at some point, you're going to be running against each other. And I ran against Joe Finn, and I'll tell you, he's a toughie. He works hard, he lost a lot of weight, and I'm not going to forget that. And, you know, I'm really going to miss you a lot. And I think we'll, some down the road, be doing something together again. Margaret, I'm a Ward One resident. She represented my, I live in the ward that she represents. And the thing I'm going to miss about Margaret is the snowstorm updates, the flooding updates, and the blight residences. I mean, she was constantly on top of those type of issues all the time for her constituents. It's uncanny. I've never seen anything like it, where she just is right on top of these things, in the middle of it, posting stuff on social media and providing for her constituents. It's unbelievable how much on-the-field training and how dedicated she was to the city. And I'm going to miss that as a Ward One resident, with her being the Ward One councillor. Going to miss her. We graduated together from high school, Quincy High, in 1993. I don't know if everybody knows that. And we, here we are, and I'm lucky to have served with you as well for the two years that I've been on the council. And I'm looking forward for down the road and seeing you at all the different events as well. And, you know, and looking forward to that as well, still being friends. So, I'm going to miss both of you. I'm glad I had the opportunity to serve with both of you on here in the council. And I'll take a lot from each one, each of you, and evolve it into what I think is important. So, thank you, Margaret, for your service.
Counselor Crowell. Thank you, Madam President. It's, you know, a couple of things, just reflecting. It's almost like surreal, right? Because both you guys have been here the whole time that I've been here, which is interesting. And I heard you both kind of say you won't watch the city council meetings anymore, which is fair. But just know, when we have a public hearing, feel free to come back and yell at us. So, we'll leave that door open. But in all sincerity, you know, I listen to motivational stuff in the morning. And there's this one guy that I key into. And a lot of the times when he ends his talks, he talks, he says something along the lines of like, you know, "Don't be sad that it's over, but smile because it happened." And I really think that's kind of how I feel tonight. Outside of being effective legislators and ward councillors, like genuinely, you're good human beings, and you're an asset to the city. And there's no doubt in my mind that you'll find another avenue to be involved. You know, I'll start with Margaret. Obviously, we're kind of like, you know, border territory. And, you know, when I think of you, and you've heard articulated here this evening, sort of your work ethic, like you're, from one ward councillor to another, like you're a ward councillor's councillor. And I mean that. Like, you get in the issues, you get involved, you're at the board hearings, you're soliciting people's input, like you're genuinely trying to move your district forward. You know, for that, I have a lot of respect for you. You know, some of the things obviously mentioned here this evening that you worked on in your time at the council, I mean, you've literally impacted people's lives in a positive fashion. And that's like, that's huge. You know what I mean? So, like, I don't know. I'm just, I'm very happy that, you know, when I came into the council, that you were here. And I'm very happy that we've been able to, you know, establish and grow a relationship over the last however long it's been. So, like I said, I know you're not going far. I'm glad you're going to take some downtime, which is great. But like I said, from one ward councillor to another, it's just been an absolute pleasure getting to serve with you. So, thank you. Counsel Finn, I think, you know, when I reflect on Counsel Finn, I think it's a lot of what you haven't said that I've keyed in on. And particularly as a freshman councillor, you know, this job, as you had mentioned, this job is not an easy job. There's a lot that comes at you very quickly. And I know that you were always just kind of that grace under fire. And I think you had articulated it to me at one point. If you sit up there long enough, everything kind of, like history repeats itself. And that was always important for me, just to see that kind of steady hand, you know, when those particular situations or scenarios are coming to fruition. And, you know, when I think of Joe Finn, you know, I think of integrity. You know, you've literally lived your life up here, I think, you know, by principles. And that's huge and backbone. Because I know that you've been up here sometimes as a lone dissenter, basing your judgment or your vote on something that you agree or disagreed with. And, you know, I think, for me, through you, what I've learned is, you know, sometimes it's okay to disagree. You know, and as a freshman councillor and now going into my fourth term, like those are life lessons that, you know, I've learned and will continue to, you know, develop with. So, thank you for your service. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Crowell. It's going to be a bittersweet goodbye for you both, but we know you will not miss Monday nights. So, we know you will be going home on Monday night and just breathing a sigh of relief. So, listen, good luck to you both. We know we'll see you around. And at this time, I would say we are moving on to motions, orders, and resolutions. Are there any? I don't see any. Scheduling of committee meetings and public hearings are next. City council meeting will be Monday, January 8, where we will swear in the new members. And so, that will be exciting. And we wish you all a happy, healthy, Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year, and stay safe.